Right, good afternoon, parents. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. I'm the principal, Mr. Pick. And just want to give a brief overview of the presentation that we have installed for you this afternoon. The first part I'll be going through. The A O S. Ten A O scoring, particularly focusing on the tentative indicative A L cut off score for the various secondary schools, how do we interpret the statistics that are being reflected in the school website? And then later on, I'll pass the time to our H O D for P C C A, Mr. Shah. He will go through with us the enhanced E C G. That we have been going through with our P five and P six students. And some of your children might have come home to share with you with regards to some of the information and sessions that we have run with them. And getting them to start planning about how to go about targeting and preparing themselves for entry into secondary schools. So that'll be the two main focus for today's session. And of course, we have a Q and A at the end of the two parts for you to raise any questions that you want. So again, thank you very much for joining us because we know that Singapore, we have just moved back into phase two of our COVID nineteen measures. So I know many of you probably at your workplace, there is also a lot of adjustments to be made. So thank you very much for being able to join us this afternoon. So I will go through with my parts about the indicative. Cut off scores, okay, for our secondary schools. Now, this whole thing will be about set one posting. So in particular, the cutoff scores is associated with the set one posting. So we will want to highlight on how, what are the data that are being released by M O E? And how do we interpret the data? Many of you will probably have already read the newspapers with regards to some of the information that M O E has released to the public. So this session, some of the materials will be quite familiar to you. But we also hope that some of you who might not have been monitoring the news that closely, you will also get a clearer picture to today's session. Now, P S L E continues to be a useful checkpoint. I think there have been various voices from the community with regards to how P S L E, you know, to rethink whether P S L E is still relevant in today's context. And in particular, after Malaysia announced that they are scrapping their primary school leaving exam. Here, Singapore, we have some voices again, talking about how, whether Singapore should consider the same thing. I think for the Malaysia situation, we will continue to monitor to see how this move that they are making is going to impact on the way their school system functions. But for us, I think we are very clear about how with regards to entry into schools. We need to ask ourselves if we remove P S L E, then what will be the next best way to decide on entry into secondary school? Is it the same thing like the primary school? Some people might like it, but there are other people who might feel that the way that we decide entry into schools. If we, if we make the secondary school entry the same as the way we are emitting our students in the primary school setting, for example, things like parent volunteer system or even distance from the school. Is that the best solution that we want? So I think right now the public probably will still be quite divided on that. Anyway, P S L E is supposed to be. It's not supposed to be a destination, it's supposed to be part of the journey. And right now, in terms of the series of announcements so far, is that when we compress the categories of scores for the in the past, we have every marks counts and you know the cutoff point for the secondary school will be, you know, in terms of points like two, six, zero, two, six, one, two, six, two. So every mark seems to count. But right now, when we compress it into A L scores, you realize that the, the categories of scores becomes greatly reduced. And you also find that in the past, when you say, okay, I want to look for schools that my child perhaps will score a two, three, seven. So what are the schools that are having cut off my S two, three, seven? You realize that in the past, that number of schools might not be a lot. But right now, if you say that two, three, seven is equipped to say a A L score of twelve. Okay, because of that compression, you realize that there will be a lot more secondary schools that are within that same categories and assess to the students. So in that way, we are also giving more choices to the students and also in that way, reducing that pressure to have to chase after the last mark in P S L E. So this is where we are coming from. Of course, some people will say that this still doesn't remove all the stress in P S L E. But I think let's do it a step at a time and it's not about totally removing the stress and totally dismantle the whole thing about ability based allocation of secondary schools to our students. But let's do a bit of adjustment and then see how it works. So that's really the spirit that we are going along in this journey here. So other than reducing that differentiation is also to say that other than the cutoff score of the schools, when they are, when there are so many more schools for us to be able to choose from. We also want to say, what are the other criteria that we want to look into in terms of selecting the schools for our children? So recognizing the achievement in terms of the achievement level, so it's not so much of a norm base scoring system, but very much in terms of the achievement level and also offering that wider varieties for our students. Okay, let me just adjust this a little bit. I think this is blocking the way. So how does this posting work? Okay. All right. So it has been announced earlier about how in the event of a tie, then the citizenship and then all the choice order of schools and computer balloting will be the series of mechanism that we will use to do as tiebreakers. So let's just maybe look at an example as to how this is being materialized in the actual posting situation. So say, for example, if you look at on the left hand side, we have these five children. They are all vying for the last place of the school of their choice. So Jane's score is sixteen, while Brian, Mary, Ellen and Rena's scores are twenties. Okay, so Jane choose school A. So because she has the better score, so she will be posted to school A first. Okay, so that settles it. And because Jane occupied the last place in school A, so Mary, Ellen and Rena, the first choice of school A would no longer be valid for them. So they will look at score, school B. Okay, and the second type, the, so other than scores, the first tiebreaker will be citizenship. Okay, so with the citizenship coming in, we will see that Brian and Mary are Singapore citizens, so they will be considered first. Okay, in terms of entry into, into school B. And then because Ellen and Rena are not Singapore citizens, so straight away, school B will be out for them as well. So Ellen and Rena will now be fighting for the last place for school D. Okay, but let's look back at Brian and Mary. So they are both Singapore citizens and they both have the same score of twenty points. Okay, so in terms of this time breaker, okay, we are still unable to unbreak the ties between Brian and Mary. So we will need next look into the choice order of schools. So in this case here, Brian has chosen school B as the first choice, whereas Mary chose school B as the second choice. So in this case here, Brian will get into school B. Then Mary will not be able to get into school B and so Mary will be posted to school C. All right. And then Ellen and Rena, okay, they both choose the, okay, so with the tiebreaker of citizenship and the tiebreaker of the choice of school, we are still not able to unbreak the tie between Ellen and Rena. So they will both go into computerized balloting. Okay, so that's the sequence as to how the time breaker system will work. All right. So indicative P S L E score was released recently. And just want to highlight that this indicative cutoff score was simulated based on the twenty twenty set one posting exercise. So because it was a simulation, so it is not an actual posting system. So there is a lot of things that are actually not hundred percent comparable with this year's situation. So this is really very much just indicative. And because it is so tentative and because there's so many factors that are not that are not same as this year's situation. So M O E decided that it's still just showing us one kind of point. M O E decided to show us the range of students that have been taken in under the, under the previous posting structure, so that we will get an indicative sense as to roughly where the cutoff point will be at. Okay, but this is just a range and so therefore there is still a lot of uncertainty in terms of how this whole thing is going to pan out in this year's exercise. Right? So generally, if you now go into the school's information page through school finder, you realize that the indicative P S L E score range of twenty twenty. So they, they don't even mention that as cutoff point anymore. They just talk about the P S L E score range that they have taken in based on last year's posting exercise. So it indicates to you that express fourteen to nineteen, in this case here, normal academic twenty one to twenty five, normal technical twenty five to twenty eight. So what does that mean? So the first number very much tells us that this is the first student or the students with the best score. Okay, so the, the first figure is the, is a score of the best students that was being emitted. Okay, and the last score will be the A L score of the last students that is being emitted. So he's telling us that the range of students that have been emitted into this school last year. The student with the best A L score is fifteen, the student with the worst A L score is twenty. So the same applies for the other two categories, normal academic and normal technical. All right. So that's how we interpret the, the, the scores that are indicated in the school finer now. And for higher Chinese language to be used for admission into SAT schools. So we have probably explained this before. So we just explain again that there is okay, the, the part that the higher Chinese will play a part is that it will be used as a tiebreaker, okay, for students of the same A L scores. Now, if the child has absolutely better A L score, even without higher Chinese, that child will be considered first priority. So just like in this case here, our first students that we will consider entry into a SAT school will be the one with seven points, but even without higher Chinese. Then for the A L score eight category, you realize that the students will be ranked according to their higher Chinese scores. So in order, it will be eight A L score with distinction, eight points with merit, followed by eight points with pass and followed by eight points with no H C L. Okay, and if your absolute A L score is is more than eight, then you will be considered as the next category. Okay, so that's how the higher Chinese act as a tiebreaker for entry into SAT schools. So you will see that for SAT schools, other than the A L scores, they will also be shared in bracket, the higher mother tongue, higher Chinese scores of the child. So in this case here, the, the students with the best performance that is taken in by this school will be five points with distinction for higher Chinese. And the last students that was being emitted has the A L score of twelve and with H C L as pass. Okay, so in this case here, you notice that in this case here, because the issue is pass, so it means that this, this school, when they take in the student, the last students that they take in, would still need to have taken higher Chinese. Okay, we will show you in an example that in this case here, based on the example just now, right, okay, the best students is five points with H C L distinction. The last student is twelve point with H C L at a pass. So if you consider one student Jane, okay, whose A L score is eleven, okay, but probably doesn't have a H C L. Okay, now Jane would have been able to get in. Okay, sorry, let me just go back. Jane would have been able to get in because the cutoff point is twelve points. So eleven points even without H C L, Jane will be emitted into this SAT school A. Okay, now look at Henry. Henry has twelve points. Okay, so same as a cutoff point, but because the cutoff point there indicates twelve points with H C L pass. So Henry without H C L would not be able to get admission into SAT school A. So the cutoff actually would have cut off Henry, okay, but Jane would have been included. Okay, so that's how we interpret the, the cutoff score for SAT schools. Okay, so I've explained just now with a blunter scoring system, there'll be fewer possible P S L E scores. So schools will be less differentiated, which means that there will be a wider range of secondary school to choose from. Students also do not have to chase after the last mark. Okay, now M O E also shared with us that the indicative P S L E T, P S L E score range that they have simulated. I think they are quite confident that the likelihood of this year's posting exercise will be more or less quite close to what they have simulated. Okay, with a fluctuation of about plus minus one A L points. So also that's the kind of kind of assurance or confidence that the M O E has based on their simulation. Okay, so we'll take that as a reference point. All right. So in terms of the choice of secondary school, which later on, Mr. Shah is going to go through in more details. We again want to highlight that P S L E score right now with the compressed A L scoring is just one of the reference point. And in terms of school choices, very much we will want to look into beyond the score, beyond the cutoff scores, what are the programs, what are distinctive programs, C C As, E P O S cultures? And what are the things that our children like? Whether the school is suitable for our children in terms of all these different factors would come into play as well. So the choice of schools probably now hinges beyond just the cutoff point itself. Okay, that we will have to consider the other factors like we have mentioned before. Okay, and D S A would order more recently, I think there was newspaper articles that have been released and I think in the report, it also says that this year, it seems that there is also heightened interest in D S A because the A L score posting is quite uncertain at this point in time. So there are parents who say that more of them will probably want to try to see if they can get their children to have entry into the schools based on D S A rather than depending on the P S L E scores. So these are some of the consideration that, that parents would have. But just want to, my own opinion, as I read through the articles, is that the way the newspapers is positioning still probably position D S A as entry into some of the more popular schools that has high cutoff scores. But here, when we later on, Mr. Shah is going to talk about D S A, we are talking about D S A as something that every child should consider. Because every secondary school do take in students through D S A. It is not just the popular schools that are taking students in through D S A. So that's something that we want to, we want all children and all parents to bear in mind that this is the case. So the, the path of D S A entry into secondary school is actually open for all of us. Okay, not just for students who are bound for popular schools. All right, so this is what I've covered just now and because we'll be sharing the slides with you. So for those who are interested to read into more details, you can, you can do that at your own time. So I will not go through in details of this. And this part here about the six options and how do we go about making the choices? The teachers have actually been going through with your children and hopefully they have come home and shared with you how they are making their choices and to discuss with you about, you know, how, how they have made their decision and so on and so forth. So I will not go through this in details again. You can read this in more details and if there is a need to do come back to us for more questions. All right. So these are some of the additional informations that M O E and schools are rolling out for parents to, to read through, to, to get a better understanding about the various options that are available for all of us. So these are the, the links are all there. So do feel free to go into these websites for more informations. All right. So if you want to ask M O E certain questions directly, these are the websites and Q R codes that are available for us. And also there's a sessions that M O E is also conducting for the parents to watch out for those in the M O E websites as well. Okay, so with that, I finished my parts of the presentation, but I just also want to address one of the questions because when we announced this session, we have sent out kind of questionnaires to, to, to ask parents to post questions that you would like us to answer. So one of the questions actually mentioned about how to choose between A level school systems and I B school system. So how do you make the distinction between whether the child is better fit for I B system or better fit for A levels? So I would just maybe in a very simple way kind of explain this. Now, I B, some of us do know the, know the details of the I B system. Now, the, the difference between I B system and A level is that A level tend to be more focused on a few subjects. So ten, so typically in, in A levels, the students would take three A level subjects, be it each one or each two or four subjects. Right, whereas I B system is quite different whereby they would take six subjects. And then on top of that, they have their extended essays and theory of knowledge. So I B system really required the students to be more of a well-rounded. Now, because they are covering six subjects plus all the tests, extended essays and theory of knowledge. Each of the subjects that they are doing cannot go very, very deep. Okay, so but they are a good generalist kind of preparation. So if our children are the type that are quite generalist, okay, probably I B will be suitable for them. If our children are more maybe specific in terms of their interest, that they are very sure that they are either arts bound person or whether they are a science bound person and they are really not very interested in the other aspect, then A level might be a more suitable one. So that will be in terms of our students, our children's inclination towards the, the kind of breadth of subjects that they are interested in. Another distinction will be that I B system is such that the, the assessment is actually along the way throughout the two years of the I B program. The deadline of certain small little assignments will be spread out across the two year system. And every assignment counts. So if our children are the kind that they do well with consistent effort and then just little small bite at a time and then they just accumulate all the way to the end with their consistent effort across the two years, then they will be suitable for the I B path. But if they are the kind that they will go ups and downs and then they, they like to have that last bit of very concentrated swatting and then get one exam over and done with, then they'll be a more A level bound kind of person. So that will be the basic way that I would distinct differentiate between the, the suitability of our children for the two system. All right. So we will come back to this Q and A later on after Mr. Shah's presentation. So for now, I will stop here and I'll pass the time to Mr. Shah. I will stop presenting here. Let me see how to do it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pick. So let me just share my screen first. Okay, now I'll move on to my segment for my particular segment. I think you can see from here as a school, what we want is we want Admiralty students to be able to make better strategic choices to enter the secondary school of their choice. Be it via academic merit, which I think Mr. Pick already mentioned to us or informed us how it can be done based on our new kind of points. But there's also another alternative route, which is direct school admission. So we want our kids to be able to embrace that there's actually another alternative route to enter to the school of their choice. Next, then as a school, how, how are we going to achieve this? For Admiralty, what we tend to do is we tend to have this particular enhanced education and career guidance lesson. I will go a bit in depth later on. And for this particular year, our approach to D S A in particular is for it to be very deliberate and intentional. We want to make sure that this is accessible to each and every student. As we look to ensure there is breadth and depth in our school, in our students' development and exposure in the C C and leadership journey. In short, what we are trying to do is we're trying them to be, to be, to be, we're trying to raise the awareness of D S A in our students. And we're trying to ensure that they are aware that D S A is meant for all. It is not only for the top classes or not only meant for the top schools. So every school, especially Mr. Pick just now, every secondary school is now offering D S A opportunities. Yeah, this is just a snapshot of our school enhanced E C G. So you can see, I'm just going to focus on our P five and P six. If you look at P five, this is where we're going to start them to, to really start to think about. For this particular year, we had even from the, from the one, we had a talk to our P five and P six. For this particular year, we even from the from term one, we had a talk to our P five and P six about D S A. So we felt that that is it is never too early to get them to start thinking about it. Because I think it's a way, the earlier they they are aware with, the the better it is for them to be able to shape and sharpen their thinking as they make their choices. This is supposed to be a journey for them, right? They can make refinements of their choices along the way. Then in term two, what for the for the P five, for P five parents to be aware of, for the term in term two, what we did before P five kids was. Actually, we we went through about how then do, what are the six choices? How then they should be, how then they should consider, how to even order the six choices? How then do we make research about which secondary school that they should opt for? As mentioned just now, looking at the school culture, school ethos, the C C S on offer, the electives as available. So these are the things that were being that were being done in term two. So in terms of subsequently, they will be going through the. E C G portfolio, but they need they need to submit to us the six choices of school. You can see here two stretch, two ability and also two safe school. They need to be able to make their thinking visible for us, so that we are able to give feedback to them. Can, so these are mainly for the P five. As we move on to P six, that's where we need to be then to be able to further refine their plans as they concretize what they have put in place. So that they they are better able to make an informed decision. I think, I just want to add one thing for for this particular E C G lesson. I think ultimately what we want in our kids is to be able to get into understand that with every choice, there's always a tree of law. But we've created clarity of goals that we actually anchor and guide them as they make that, as they make their decisions. Now, this next slide you can see here is our E C G Google Classroom, which we have created. In this particular case for P six, this is our online platform where we tend to have conversation with our students, be it as a level, as a class or even individuals. We even push out reminders to them of e-open house, schedule secondary school talks, even D S A information. And recently, we even updated them whenever there's any information or any updates, we will do it via Google Classroom. These have been done since the start of the year. So our conversation to our current P six students have been starting from the start of the year, right? Next, I think this is just an example of our insight in the. Google Classroom, we actually assign a portfolio, it's a Google Excel portfolio. This is where every child are supposed to, they are supposed to make their thinking visible by indicating there. There are six choices, then they need to be able to identify whether they are actually going via the Academy Merit or B P S L E. Or they want to try for D S A. So we hope that you actually have seen your child portfolio. If you have not, maybe we will engage you or you'd, we like to encourage you to have future conversation with your kids about this. As you you also help them to shape their thinking. Next, I think in this particular portfolio, we have been, you you will see here then as as we guide them to order or. As we guide them to make their six second school choices, you will see here as mentioned just now, there you see a two stretch, two ability and two safe school. I think this is just a basically just a guide for us as as we guide our students to make their six choices. Let me, let me, let me just explain a bit more on this. So what what can be considered as a stretch school? What is, what can 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 it place as an ability or even a safe school? So if you look at it, if let's say I'm a sixteen pointer student, so I tend to be able to score sixteen points. So in this particular case, what then would be called or considered a stretch school for myself? So if I'm a sixteen pointer, schools that have cut off point about twelve to fifteen, which are above, which are higher. These are considered as stretch schools. So if if I'm a six, again, I give myself, if I'm a sixteen pointer student. If if I see a cut-off points for secondary school, which is about twelve to eighteen, which is I'm spec in the middle. So these are schools which are within my ability, so this can because it is ability schools. Safe school means are very comfortable, that means for a child, they know that very sure they are able to get into the particular school. So example can be if I'm a sixteen pointer again, the school is from sixteen to eighteen. So you are very comfortable that without a doubt, no, you might not be able to, might not might not even have to go to any. There's no need to go for any tiebreaker, you are able to get to the particular school of your choice. So these are just a simple example of how then we guide our students to think about these three categories of secondary school choices. As mentioned just now, I think for this stretch school, for for us, our approach, we tend to tell our students that. They, we encourage them to try for D S A for stretch schools. The reason being, these stretch schools are schools whereby if they rely solely on their academic merit or P S L E results. They might not stand a high chance of actually entering. So in a way, they are, they are having an alternative way. Even without P S L E to go to the school that they really want to to, in order for them to pursue their interest and their passion even further. Can not to worry because I think of D S A, the D S A, I think you you are aware of this, that results will be out in somewhere in September. So once result is out, that's where we encourage our students to still re-look at their choices again. And they need to ask themselves whether are they going to stick to the six choice or they want to reorder, they want to think about it. Because I think I remember there was one parent who asked about this. The 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 distinct, we encourage them to re-look after the D S A results. If they choose to say that, okay, D S A, I wasn't successful. But I still want to go to to this school, this stretch school of mine. Then the the solution to it will be that particular child will have to study even harder, be prepared to work extra hard in order for him or her to enter to that particular school. Next, I think here is just an example of how a student actually did up his or her, no name being mentioned, his or her. Choices, so we can actually see the reasons as to why they choose a particular school. You can see for example, because of the the C C that is on offer or they're looking at I P or S A P schools or even I B. And and if they intend to go for D S A, you can see from this particular example given, they indicated indicated down there. The talent area that they actually are gunning for, going for. And teachers, teachers tend to be able to give, look at all this and be able to give feedback. So that we are able to help them to reassess their 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 choices or rethink about, get them to further encourage them to talk to even. Their C C A teachers, their form, just even their peers, even even yourself, the the parents. So we actually, all these are done in hope that they are not fixated that academic route is the only way to enter to the school. And for on our N S A school, how then do we support our students? Would be that that we have done milestone checks in order for them to and for us to be able to understand their thinking. And if we notice any misconceptions that he that they have, then we tend to be able to address it during our level talks, right? And mentioned just now, the order of school is actually important. So all these are very important for you to actually have conversation with your kids. Now, I think this is one, one, one question that parents are asking also. Here is what is the cut-off point to enter secondary school via D S A? So you can see here on this particular site, slide on the left, this is the placement, placement outcome. Meaning if you're anyone who scores four to twenty, you are eligible for express, express stream. Twenty-one to twenty-two, your express slash a normal A C A option, twenty-two, twenty-four is normal A C A. Twenty-five is normal A C A slash N T, N T is twenty-six to thirty. So basically, these are the placement or the cost, cost eligibility based on your scores that you got for your P S L E. So I'm on the right, you can see here, I just give you a simple example here, our class of school here, which is Riverside Secondary School. For Riverside Secondary School, the cut-off point is to enter express, this is six to fourteen. Normal A C A is twenty-one to twenty-three, normal tech is twenty-five to twenty-seven. So in this particular scenario that we're going to post to you, your child applies to Riverside Secondary School via D S A and is offered a place. So you will get the result somewhere in September and you actually accepted the particular offer. Then after P S L E, your child actually gotten his or her results and he or she scored, scores sixteen marks for, sixteen points for P S L E. So in this particular case, which course will she go to? Because if you look at the cut-off point on Riverside, six to fourteen is actually an express stream. So if you, the answer is actually, it is, you're the child will actually go to express stream. Because for D S A, it is based on cost eligibility. Because that particular child's call sixteen, sixteen falls under the band of express within four to twenty. So that particular child will be admitted to Riverside and Riverside will offer him or her express stream. Even though he or she did not meet the six to fourteen, okay? Hope this further encourage you to really, really consider D S A, right? But at the same time, again, we always been telling students, also then that they also need to be also mindful of this. They need to be mindful of their own academic standing as they as they reassess their choices against the cut-off points of school. Now, just to share a bit about our last year's data for twenty twenty, we actually had. Twenty-one students who actually went to the school of their choice via D S A. And here we can see the breakdown here, we have six who actually went through academic route, academic talent area. Then we had two via leadership and thirteen via C C. I think the the the, I just want to mention or elaborate a bit more on one that you can see as basketball. I think for this this basketball student. To to for this basketball student, what happened was she was from, she was from our track and field. She was from our track and field C C, but she is very passionate about basketball. So what happened was she she continues playing basketball after school with her siblings. She continued to hone her skills. Then during the D S A application, she applied to this secondary school that she wanted to go to via basketball. Even though she knows that there's no basketball C C in Emerald Primary. And and I think to her, she believed that and we also believe that. For us, for a child, they need to, they need for for C C exposure in Emerald, they need to ask themselves what skill set they have gotten. From all the experience, the exposure that was given to them in Emerald and how they can bring that to help them to stand out during interview. To help them to go to a school of their choice to to be able to pursue their interest or passion even further. Alright, so that's a simple example to you, so just in case anyone would to ask, my child wants to go to volleyball in secondary school. But Emerald doesn't offer volleyball, would it be a disadvantage? My answer is no, all the more that your child needs to ask him or herself whether he or she has the worth or the substance in order to. Go through and do well for that particular interview or even audition or even trial. Okay, I'm just going to share a bit more, this is some some more success stories. This, this is Alicia Hannah, she was, she is our graduate from twenty seventeen. Currently, right now, she's always, she's a sec force to that St. Margaret Secondary School. She was one of our lead dancers when she was in, she was, she was with us. She entered St. Margaret via Meli Dance D S A. And the 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 platform allow her to to even shine even brighter at St. Margaret. At sector, she was appointed as the vice chairman. In sector three, she became the technique leader. And now I think at set four level, most, most of them, except for whatever, they tend to really relinquish their post so that they can focus on the study. But she she does, she did share with me that she intend to pursue further passion for dance, even when she goes to the street level. Right, now another, another story here, this is Natalie Lim, she's our twenty sixteen graduate. Currently now she is year five student in Sota doing visual arts. You can see here, I think for for Natalie, she did mention that Sota, how does Sota actually helped her? I think Sota provided her with the environment to be exposed to different forms of visual arts such as painting, sculpting and photography. The curriculum provided many invaluable learning experiences where she can be learned to be open-minded to different ideas and perspective. And see the world as a classroom. On the right here, you can see here is an example of an exhibition which is called a deviation. Alright, so I think we are proud of her from our end here. Then next, not to worry too much, you're not seeing, they are they are twins, actually, this is Kimberly, Kimberly Lim. Twenty sixteen graduate as well, she's also in Sota, you can see from her school uniform there, she's also year five, she's doing film now. So I think for her, she D S it to so to Sota via creative writing. And she studied literary arts for four years before transitioning, transitioning to film in year five based on her interest. Yeah, then I think you can, it's mentioned down here that you can see here that she 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 mentioned that. The the being able to be part of Sota or her class, she's surrounded by like-minded peers. And that helped her to not only to enjoy her experience there in Sota, but even to further develop her passion. One of it that she shared with me was the fact that she had, she had about, she had. They 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 allow her to be able to film a short, short clip to a particular. Event, I can't recall, nevertheless, I believe she she she's enjoying herself. And and looking forward to further what she has in mind for herself, right? Next success story that I just like to share, the last one will be, this is Mama Fatir. Fatir is twenty fifteen graduate from Emerald in twenty fifteen, currently he's in year two. At R P, the days R P and S S Singapore, Singapore Sports School. So sorry, but in. Okay, sorry, but it, I think, I think, I think somehow or other, I'm missing that particular slide, but just now you could see was Fatir. In the previous slide, she's, he he actually got, he actually went to Singapore Sports School fire shooting. By a shooting, by a shooting. He was actually our football member in Emerald Primary, but I think through football, he has he has learned about being focused. And then he used that to apply to Singapore Sports School for shooting. And right now, if I can remember correctly, he was even invited to join the youth team. And now he's in R P, like this, this R P and sports school as this diploma program, right? Okay, next one will be, you see here will be. Okay, this, this I just, I'm just sharing two articles, which was shared, which you can, you can find in our streets times on Monday. Talking about, if you want to find out a bit more about D S A, it's mentioned down there. And also it's about getting them to understand that. We as a school, we already been advising you the same thing, not to, not to be, not to, not to be too worried, not to, to look beyond. The cut-off points to ask for things like even to ask things like even like what the school has to offer, the elective, the C C A. Even for even for location as well, right? And I think the last article that I like to share is. Sorry, technically, sure. Okay, this particular article will be the fact that in in this particular article. Yeah, I'm really not sure, sorry, okay, in this particular article, it talks about. It 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 makes reference to that giving that D S A is meant for top schools. I think as mentioned, but just now by Mr. Pick and myself, that D S A is not only for top school, it's it's for, we want to make sure that it is accessible to every, every student. D S A is meant for all, every child stretch school might differ from student to 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 students. So they need to really ask themselves, what is it that they want to pursue further? How then else can they go to a school of their choice and not really depending only on academic merit alone? Then how then do we want to make, tell them, okay, it's not to chase the extra points? They don't know only that, or those who have holistic development of themselves, right? Last is just. It's just a reminder that this obviously important is to all that application started from fifth of May to first of June. You need to apply it online via our D S A or centralized portal. We already spoken to the students or your child, if you're not sure what to do, you can go to Google Classroom and to 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 see the notes that we have left there. Then the selection process will be from twenty eight June to thirteen February. And during the selection process. Any E or E interview, E audition, E trials, it will be done here in Admiralty Primary School, so you not 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 to worry about that. Okay, before we go to Q and A, I just like to mention one thing. This particular, this this particular question from a parent, the parent asked whether can that his or her child change C C after. After D S A submission, okay, the answer is this, during application period, you can see from fifth May to first June, you can go in and make changes. If you, if you want to, that means again, talk to the child, talk to your child about it. Once you are more or less clearer than which which are the three choices for D S A, you can, you can just put it in, you just can just apply it online. But after that particular period, there is no changes, you cannot make any changes to it. And the next thing is, once. And the next thing is, once you actually accepted the, the DSA offer, it is actually a commitment on your end. So you are expected, your child is expected to honor the commitment to the posted DSA school, so there is no changing of if you go via talent area or CCA, then there's no, no changing of CCA just, just after you enter the particular school of your choice. Alright, I think that's it from me, maybe we would like to start with the Q and A question session now.
Okay, thank you, Sean, parents, I, I know that some of you have been keying in your questions through the chats and we hope that we have answered them. Now, for, for the rest of us, if you want to, you can consider muting yourself and to raise your questions verbally to us, thank you.
Hi.
Yes, hi.
Yeah, hi, sorry, thanks for sharing, Mr. Big, I just want to check with you something. Okay, on the PSLE scoring system, I've seen the achievement levels, which is like achievement level five, four, six, you know, all these things. Okay, I have a question here, assuming, okay, when we look at achievement level six, the bending, the marks actually from forty five to sixty four, I believe so. So, okay, so assuming a kid scores sixty four marks for each of his subjects, so that comes to two hundred and fifty six. And another kid scores forty five for each subject, that comes to a hundred and eighty marks. However, they are, they are bended as, you know, given as six points for all the four subjects, even though in terms of numbers, it's worlds apart. Then how, how, how is this fair to the kid who scores actually in terms of actual marks, two hundred and fifty six compared to a kid that is scoring hundred and eighty marks?
So the, the new PSL scoring is actually trying to compress that. So yes, if you are talking about boundary score, that one marks that actually caused the child to, to kind of like tip over to the next A R score range, of course, if you compare students at that range, you'll find that the, the difference is very huge. But for the rest of the students, actually you'll find that actually that has been compressed. So this thing here, of course, we hope that our children are not the kind that for every, for every subject they are missing out the next span by one mark, we, we hope that that's not the case. Yeah, so, so in the actual fake case, I think would there be a lot of our children who are in that kind of situation? The answer is probably not, not really, I, I hope, I hope not. So I will not think too much and focus too much about that. But to hope that our children's ability in all the subjects are roughly within that range, yeah.
Sorry to interrupt, but you see, for, when I look at a bending, right? It's like twenty marks away, you know, for one particular bending. Yeah, so I'm just actually a bit puzzled, how does this system, you know, going to help the kid in terms of PSL scoring?
Okay, in terms of the, the decision of the different range, so you'll see that the different A R score, the mark range is actually slightly different, I think at the upper range, the, the marks are a bit narrower. Whereas at the lower part, the, the range tend to be opened up quite a lot. Actually, it has to do with the kind of differentiation that the, that M O E is trying to achieve. So it's about the, the number of students that are congregating around that mark range. Okay, so, so this one here is something that they look at the, the max distribution at the national level and then they decide what will be the fair way to differentiate them apart, because at the upper range, if you don't have such a, a narrower range, you might find that you have a lot more students that need to do the tiebreaker. Okay, whereas at the lower mark range, when the, the number of students there are not as many, they can afford to have more, a wider mark range within the, the A R scores. So that's, that's how they determine that, yeah.
Alright, okay, thank you, I just have one more, sorry, this DSA, the application dates, is this meant for P six or P five students?
A P six, yeah. We'll wait till next year.
Alright, no worries then, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Sean, you want to take some of the questions that are coming in from the chat as well? Okay, about rejecting DSA offers? Your chat, your chat, you need to switch on your chat, sorry.
Yes, test can hear, sorry, parents, I think my, my computer went A wall on me, but I'm, I'm here, I will answer questions, I think there was one parent here who asked, actually, can I reject DSA offer from school? Once they offer you, once they offer you the, the, the option, for example, you have the option either to you can, you can choose to not accept the offer that is on the table. But then, then again, we, we, we want you to be able to understand that after the child has gone through that particular process, we hope that it's actually an informed decision by he or she really wants it and going. We don't want him or her to spend all the, the, the time preparing himself or herself. And then in the end, after the offer is given, then you wanted to, you will say, okay, we want to, want to, want to reject. And for, just to add on further, for those parents who, who your child has received two offers or even three even offers, then there will be an opportunity for you to have submission of preference, that means among the three options, which is your first choice, which is second choice, which is, besides, you have the choice, right? Okay, let me look at other questions. Okay, I think I saw one more here. Asking whether can my child apply for badminton through DSA, but he doesn't get to, he doesn't train outside school or inside, just purely based on interest. I, again, again, the, the key thing to ask ourselves would be, I, I, I believe that whether besides interest, thus the child has the particular skill in order to put him or his, him or him or her above others, I mean, be able to stand out during the, the trial. So if he or she has an innate ability to play badminton and he, he or she is able to able to do well or stand out during interview or the charging, it's no harm giving it a go. But my, my advice to some students when they approach me like with this kind of question is, I told them to go to YouTube, you can even just go to YouTube to better understand the badminton scene in the secondary school, there's national sport games videos. They can, they can watch, they can see what the, the, how the skill like for our secondary school to the badminton. Right, you, you can, you can get your child even to consider doing that first.
Okay, I'll try to answer one question that was posted in the chat about if, let's say, the child got the posting and then halfway through they have to change move house, so what will happen? And I think hopefully the, the moving house is not a last minute decision and that is something that you can foresee. You know, kind of like a way of hit and therefore you might want to exercise your choice of schools accordingly. Without getting yourself caught in that kind of situation. Because once the posting decided if you, if you need to, if you need to change school, then it might really depend on whether the school has any more vacancies for you. So do make your choice very carefully if you are in the kind of transition stage whereby you are thinking about moving house. Next, there is this question also on this thing about how do we make the decision about about the schools, the school choice of yours. Generally, over the years, we have been recommending our students to divide that six choices into, into three parts. So maybe two schools will be kind of a bit of a stretched school, two schools that are probably schools that they are able to enter and then two schools that are safe schools. Now, in this case here for, because the A R score is new, so likelihood is that there could be some shift in terms of the A R score from the indicative cut off scores, so definitely the risk is a lot higher this year, because this is the first year that we are implementing it. So be, be quite careful with the choice. Now, some of these things here is very difficult for us to say what is the right way to go, because it really depends on the risk appetite of the, of the parents. So say, for example, if right now my, my child is likely to score a sixteen point. And then I say that, okay, but there are these schools that the indicative cut off score is maybe fourteen or fifteen that I still might want to give it a go. So that will be a factor that you will, you will need to, you will need to consider whether it's worth the risk to put these schools at your first choice, second choice, okay? And that you know that, okay, if I don't hit the cutoff score, it's okay. And when we say ability school is schools that, again, you have the kind of confidence that most likely you are going to make it. So making it to the cut off score might mean that if you are sixteen point, the kind of score is maybe about like sixteen or seventeen. And, and you are hoping that maybe it might become better for you whereby the cut off point is reduced by one. So that if you are sixteen point, you are almost guaranteed to go in, so the tiebreaker doesn't affect you. Okay, so, so, so take, take note that the tiebreaker in terms of school choice and citizenship only come in when there is a tiebreaker required, if not, the posting is actually by pure merit. Okay, so it's, it's a risk that you will want to take and then the safe school is definitely something, two choices whereby you are like saying that, oh, likelihood is quite high that my child is able to get into that school. Now, some of us might also decide based on how traditionally we see certain school and meeting certain students of certain ability range. Okay, if we have friends, children who are already studying in some schools, these might be some of the way we can gauge, but definitely the risk is something whereby we can't say for sure how to minimize it. And it is something whereby I think different child will take it differently. But we definitely say that leave at least two choices that you know that you are for sure going to get in. And make sure that these are at least the two choices that you have, okay? Because the last thing that you want is that all six choices are, are all, are all wrong because because of, of the way the cutoff point has shifted and then you ended up getting yourself into a situation whereby M O E would just post you to the nearest school to your poster address, okay, that's the situation that we would definitely discourage our students to get into. But in terms of the, the actual thing that how you decide on the risk, I would say that it is something that we, we can't say for sure, okay, we can't say for sure. Alright, any, so Mr. Sha, any? Yeah, I'm you, I'm you.
Okay, it means to be, I addressed certain questions here. I think again, as mentioned just now, when certain parents ask whether you can actually choose to changed or you, you choose to then the key thing that I want to emphasize is you need to be able to honor the commitment. So the, the school really is committing or they are committed to offer you a place, I mean, they reserve you a place. So you cannot, you cannot say that, okay, once you've gotten the results, it seems that your child got, gotten a better result. He or she can go to other schools that you want to decline that particular offer that one, I don't think it's possible, so you are, you're required to honor the commitment. Then there's one particular parent who asked that the DSA choice or ranking is important. I think it's once the, if your child receives three DSA offers, the choices definitely will play a part as to which one is your first choice, second choice, and third choice, and you'll be given the choice accordingly. Then let me look at one more. I, this one mentioned here, both DSA are also based on PSL result, is there a difference? I think for DSA, the main difference is DSA, you are being offered a place before your PSL results. So you, you are, if I can put it, is, is as good as saying that we are one foot in the particular secondary school of your choice. Then the PSL result comes in a bit later whereby it is just to confirm or affirm that you are able in terms of academically, you are able to stay, stand on your own two feet throughout the four years of this, four to five years of the second, secondary school experience.
Okay, I'll answer one of the parents' question on DSA, wanting to go via academic route and then based on P four, P five, P six S A one results, how would we be able to know which secondary school the child is eligible to apply? Now, most likely based on the ability of the child and based on the previous cutoff point and also the indicative A R's cutoff score, you roughly know where your child stand with respect to the cutoff point of the various secondary schools. So if you are trying to aim slightly higher, normally if the, if the school offers academic route, it is not just by the overall scores, it will usually be specific academic subjects. For example, math, science, languages or mother tongue languages, usually you'll be there. And then you might need to inquire from the school, we've got to, for these specific subjects that they are looking at in terms of the students' academics, what would be the kind of scores that they are looking at? So that would be something that would differ from school to school and you will probably have to check in with the schools on the way they would choose our students, alright.
Okay, I think if I look here, there's one, one question saying that freely might be a bit too late because DSA already closed. Again, again, I think the, the, the key thing is, it is, it is not about the academic results, but as there is actually a PSL score calculator online. Then your child can actually use it to gauge or use it to convert their scores to A R score to, to relook at their choices of school as to their, also their DSA choices. And based on that, then ultimately decide what are the schools that he or she wants to apply DSA for and what are the talent areas? All these are done prior or even before P S, because the key thing is not about P S A academic merit is more of the child's interest and passion and even achievement in primary school.
Hi, Mr. Sha.
Yes, hi.
Hi, what you asked, is there a, a, a limit on how many DSA we can apply, how many school we can apply to DSA?
Okay, thank you for the question, okay, for DSA, you can apply up to three, three choices. And then, and for this particular three choices, you can only apply to the same school for two different talent area. Meaning you, your first, for example, giving example, concrete example, you apply to Riverside for maybe leadership and a CCA. Meaning you already, you already use up two of your choices. Then the third choice, you're gonna apply to maybe Evergreen Secondary, I'm just using our cluster school as an example. So you read, you read done up all, all three choices.
Oh, okay, yeah, given the example that you've given for Riverside Secondary School. You know, the score that this person actually, if this person obtained sixteen, right? So the cutoff point for Express is actually up to fourteen, right? What if the person achieved twenty one, twenty one, the, the total score of twenty one is still sixteen? So because the, the express actually four to twenty only, so would this person being posted to normal?
Yeah, correct, you, you actually answered it, because for twenty one, under the placement cost eligibility, twenty one will be eligible for normal account, so Riverside will, will offer you that particular string.
I see, thank you.
Express, sorry, sorry, one more time, express stroke normal account. So that is based on the cost eligibility, so when, what Riverside will do is most likely it will offer you either an option to go express or even normal account. Then is your, is your child or your, your choice to, to choose which course you take and normally they will tend to advise you further.
Oh, I see, so you can choose, it just that, you know, they will advise you to choose a normal under such contenders.
He, for, okay, this is just between my, my conversation with my peers from secondary school, they tend to advise so that that particular child is, is able to maintain and sustain and, and won't be left behind too far. To be able to choose the, the course that is well suited or fitted for, for him or her. To be able to choose the the course that is well suited or fitted for for him or her.
Okay, okay. Alright, so which mean that even though by DSA, he got sixteen point?
No, twenty one point, twenty one point. No, no, you know, if let's say he got the expresses, he recommended four to twenty mark right now, so if he got but for Riverside, in order to get into expresses, you know, four to sixteen, fourteen, four to fourteen, so this person actually get twenty one. So by right in in normal circumstances, they will advise you to go to normal, normal strings here, express, because it's too far off of that.
His DSA sixteen, yeah.
Yes, he is sixteen. But for, yeah, DSA, he got, he got DSA a place, but they never guarantee you whether it's a it's a it's a normal or express. So they advise you to get, given your PSLA result, you advise you to go into normal. Because it's best fit for the standard, in the way, yes, and I might understand you correctly.
Correct, you're very correct.
Alright. Yeah, thank you so much.
So there are three choices.
Yes, correct, three choices.
Alright, you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sean.
Okay, um, I think there is also this, okay, so in terms of students applying to the same secondary school for different areas, that one is definitely, yes. And then in terms of, yeah, let me see, okay, I cannot see the. In terms of the question on the waitlist, usually after the application of the DSA, the the reply from the secondary school will be either waitlist or confirm. So if it's confirmed, then you would have to decide which is the one that you want to take. If it's on the waitlist, then there is actually no decision for you to make at this point in time. Okay, because you're on the waitlist, so you have to wait until the school is going to confirm an offer for you. Then you will make a decision whether you will want to take it up, okay? Any other question, I think we have answered most of the questions in the chat site, any questions that anyone want to raise, I'm muting the mic. Okay, um, right, if not, I know time is precious, so we will end our session here. So that those of us who need to kind of lock off from work and and start traveling home can do so. So once again, thank you very much, parents, for joining us for today's session. You can continue to raise your questions to us, to your child or by writing to your form teachers and Mr. Shaw about your questions and we will do our best to try to answer you, right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.